Okay. DPW, change the recycling fees from eighty-five dollars to first twenty-five, second fifteen, third one hundred.
Should be subsequent. Third and above. The last line then should be third and above.
Third and above, hundred dollar.
Or subsequent, third and subsequent.
Greater than or equal to three.
Good thing you didn't make that motion.
There were more.
Yep.
Okay. Motion on this?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, this is all.
You picked out.
This form. Tommy Jeffrey. Well, you're already on here for.
Fifty-two weeks.
Well, fifty-two weeks, yeah, every, every single week, picking up either paper or.
Could be a nice hit, fifty-two.
Yeah.
You might want to change it.
Okay, change, make sure your names get in here, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks Ed.
Thanks Ed for making that more reasonable, that's, that's good.
Do you have any more community reports?
Why not?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, all right, we don't need to get more than.
Yeah.
The ones that Joe gave us, for community development. Okay. Revenue line for Sue Cahill, paving is five and six of your packet. Sue is looking for revenue line for administration of the HLPC. Application fees are fifty dollars, needs a revenue line and also an expense line. So, create a new revenue line and create an expenditure line. In the budget, seven hundred and fifty dollars each. So, from the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission.
You can sign the bill, Kerry's name.
By communication of five fourteen nineteen attached, request the following FY two thousand and nineteen budget amendments. Want to create new revenue line, A one seven five two zero two two four two one five for seven hundred and fifty dollars and increase the corresponding expenditure line by seven hundred and fifty dollars. Give you total update at eight hundred and fifty. Anybody have a discussion on this, questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. What's that one? Moving on. Okay, John, you have two items here. Communications from Sean.
Hurley, you have the updated committee report, John?
Yeah.
I have for the bonds.
First one is Hurley Avenue paving and complete streets construction, looking for bonding in the amount of one million two hundred thirteen thousand dollars, of which six hundred, seventy-six thousand dollars will be reimbursed through.
I think that John has an update.
Just modified.
The council, the previous, the council previously authorized seventy thousand.
Five hundred eighty.
Five hundred eighty, so with what we're asking for now is going to be one point two eight five million, which incorporates the previous seventy.
One point two eight five, I have a new committee report for Doug. There will be two committee reports, one for the bonding and one for the, the committee report that New York State needs for the funding in first instance for the project. Okay, so this is the committee report for bonding.
So, from the controller on behalf of engineering, request an additional one million two hundred fourteen thousand four hundred twenty dollars in bonding for the Hurley Avenue paving and complete street project construction cost. Seventy thousand five hundred eighty was previously authorized for engineering and design, bringing total authorized bonding amount to one million two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. eventual amount to be borrowed will be reduced by available grants estimated at seven hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. With sixty thousand is designed and six seventy-six construction, so the estimated financial impact is five hundred thirty-eight thousand four hundred twenty dollars.
That's the, the financial impact is the, the estimated city share of the new bonding request.
So, just to give you a little update on the project, the design is completed and it's with DOT for their technical review that they performed for, before allowing us to bid the work. We're hopeful that DOT's review will be done within the next month or so, at which time we will proceed to bid and our objective is to construct the project in the fall of this year.
Questions?
So, what have we spent so far, just that seventy thousand?
Correct.
Okay.
That was what we authorized, about last month, wasn't it?
Well, last month, we had you change the seventy thousand five eight to like seventy-one thousand, which.
Yeah. Remember that four hundred twenty dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, I remember, yeah, all right. Okay, all right. You have a motion on this?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then here's the other.
Yeah, so background on the Hasbrook CSO.
What was CSO?
Well, okay, combined sewer outfall, so we have a regulating structure on this, on this sewer shed that discharges to the Rondow Creek during rainfall events and that over time, you know, we're, we're under a requirement to disconnect the storm drains from the sanitary so that that happens less often. And we received this grant worth six hundred thousand dollars from DEC. The grant, however, does not pay anything towards the design, so that six hundred thousand is only for construction, not for design, so we're coming to you for, we did a competitive evaluation of engineering firms and selected most qualified and are, are asking for one hundred thirty thousand dollars to cover those design fees.
Before we, let me reinsert this other item from the, from the last resolution. Resolution authorizing the implementation of funding in the first instance for the Hurley Avenue paving and street projects in the city of Kingston. DIN eight seven six one point nine four, estimated financial impact is?
I, I wrote included in bond because we already have.
Included in bond, so this, this is a tag to the one that just went around.
Mm-hmm.
Your motion here?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, John, any more comment on?
Uh, no, sorry, I'm getting ahead of you there.
Did the bond already come around? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was listening.
So, she looking for bonding of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We have a grant of six hundred thousand dollars for the construction. Will this be it?
For funding?
Yeah.
No, because we expect the construction, well, part of the, the design firm has to establish the exact plans and limits of the project, but we think it could be a one point three million dollar construction project, of which the grant would pay six hundred thousand. So, they're, you know, it, it's too early for us to, to be certain of that one point three million at this point.
Here you say, once we have the final designs, I will come back to the council with another request for funding, that would include all the city's share of the construction costs, as well as on match requirement for the six hundred thousand dollar WQIP grant.
Yes.
Anticipate construction project to cost a million and three.
Where? So, it's, it's somewhat, the, the majority of it is worked through Rondow Gardens, through their main drive, which would be installation of, we think about a twenty-four inch storm drain there, and then there are connections at Hanrady and Gerald at the downstream ends of those streets that will, will allow the separation of those streets. There's also a component right at Garrigan, at nine W, that does the same basic thing, where upstream of that, there are some separated storm sewers that are currently going to the sanitary, so by constructing the, the piping through Rondow Gardens, it gives it somewhere to go to, that's not the sanitary sewer. So, that's, that's, it's that general area.
How about East Chester Street?
It's not part of this, so this is phase one of about a five or six phase project that could be implemented over twenty years, you know, as opportunities arise to make additional separations in that sewer shed.
So, but does the six hundred thousand grant only cover phase one, then?
Correct, it's only, it's only used for this, that geographic location I described. We'd be looking in future years for similar grant opportunities for future phases.
So, the DEC's been looking at this themselves too, and that's why they're granting you this, or did you, you go seek it?
I don't, you know, I don't know if you know the history of how this, how this, how we obtained this, but.
That was a CFA that we submitted last year and the, I think the original study was done by Time Bond, so we based the application on that study, their recommendations, the application is for construction dollars only, they, they don't allow funding per design. That's part of, you know, just what's not eligible with the grant funds. So, I think this has been a priority to try and meet the water quality standards.
Thank you.
Other questions? Your motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, John, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Done. Next item is.
East Chester Street.
Yeah.
One more. Communication from the fund, from the mayor to the unassigned fund balance, unassigned fund balance is just a little under seven and a half million dollars, based upon the city's budget expenditures of forty-four million, which is seventeen point oh two percent. Policy is the city shall strive to maintain an unrestricted assigned fund balance between ten and thirteen percent. Per this funding, the city policy, we have an excess and the mayor is asking if we can use some of that to pay for, well, the text says any lawful purpose approved by the common council, so he's suddenly coming to us and asking for up to three hundred and ninety thousand dollars of the fund balance, the payoff portion of remaining amortization with the New York State retirement system and another hundred, three hundred fifty thousand dollars for citywide street paving projects. So, that's the total, if I did the math right, that's a total we're asking for, take seven hundred forty thousand dollars out of the unassigned fund balance, which would leave us with six million seven hundred forty-eight, or fifteen point three percent.
Well, we've, well, we've already, well, we've already used, we've used seven hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars of fund balance since twelve thirty-one eighteen. We use money, money.
Okay, so that would come off, that would also.
Yeah, that, that's before that, so when you, when you subtract the, the three resolutions that have been taken from fund balance since twelve thirty-one eighteen, this would bring us down to thirteen point six four. It's still pending the audit, I believe the fund balance policy speaks to the audited numbers, so.
Right, it does.
It's still pre-audit, so, you know, the policy's ten to thirteen, this would get you to thirteen point six four and then upon the final audit, council would have, you know, if the numbers don't change much, you'd have a little bit more to potentially look at, however you want to do that. In terms of, you know, the use of the fund balance, the amortizations, payoff amortization's pretty consistent with what we've used it for before. The general idea of, of using the fund balance to get that within a policy is you, you generally want to use it in a way where you're not funding expenditures that would create future budgetary stresses or future cost, you wouldn't use it to necessarily, say, fund a new department that's going to have continual, continual cost, so in the past, the city has used it to offset bonding for capital purchases, we've used it to pay down debt, items of those nature, so in terms of the amortization of the, the retirement system, we currently have approximately seven hundred thirty-five thousand dollars of amortizations left with the retirement system, at one point we're over two million. This would get that number down to, if we use the full three ninety, would get us down to under three hundred fifty thousand dollars in amortization left with the state, so that, that's great. And then, you know, obviously Superintendent, he'll go into detail about, you know, his, his use for the paving, but once again, that's another item that won't cause future costs, if anything, it's going to save, you know, the need for the city to bond or otherwise fund through the budget paving work, so.
Who is still within the policy.
Yeah, well, you're still slightly above it pending the audit and then, you know, once we have the audit, then, you know, the council can take action at that time to, you know, bring it down within policy.
So, what led to the amortizations to rise up to two million dollars in the first place?
That goes back a number of years ago at the recession, there was a huge spike in the pension rates at that time, based on market performance of stocks, you know, there was the big crash, the pension rates skyrocketed. At that time, in listening to the needs of municipalities, the state put out an amortization program which allowed municipalities to opt into an amortization program. The alternative at that time was to absorb the increase in rates and pass that along to your current taxpayers at that time. If my memory serves me right, it would have been over a million dollar increase year over year in the pension budget, the mayor at that time elected to opt into the plan just to smooth it out, you know, I, I think across the state it was kind of a mixed bag, you know, miss, a lot of municipalities did opt into the plan, so then to smooth it out, you continued to borrow each year a decreasing amount till you got to the point where you could currently fund or budget the actual actuarial calculation, so the city's to the point where we haven't borrowed in several years and we've been not only paying off these amortizations on the, you know, there's a scheduled payment like a car payment every year, we've been, been making additional payments, these lump sum payments when, you know, we have positive budgetary performance, so potentially, you know, if we're having this conversation again next year, we can pay off the remaining balances and be done.
So, zeros we're going to get to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's a ten-year payment repayment period anyway, so even, you know, the city only has several year, a few years left, but, you know, the rates are between three and a three and a half percent on the list that's left, but it's, it's better than what we're getting in a bank, so it makes sense for our taxpayers to try to pay them off quicker.
Okay.
Give it to me.
I, I do.
Why would we use the whole three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, is it up to, why would we not just pour it all in there?
Well, well, you have to pay it off in even dollar amounts. So, you know, depending on what the final bill comes in at. Like I can't pay, there's, not see a camp, the state would prefer to send us a bill to pay off an actual amortization, within this number, there's a number of amortizations I'm looking to pay off, it's not just one loan, it's multiple loans.
Controller on behalf of the mayor, request approval of the following two thousand and nineteen budgetary transfer from fund balance to provide funding for citywide street paving projects.
There's a second part to that.
Oh, yeah, okay, through construction materials and supplies, three hundred.
Three, three hundred thousand and then below, it's fifty thousand to overtime.
Overtime, fifty thousand, okay, and additionally, request approval of the use of three hundred ninety thousand dollars in fund balance to pay off remaining amortization for the New York's state retirement system, so the impact is seven hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So, so just to follow up on that one there, as I've done prior years, I'll come back later in the year for the actual budgetary transfer, because that's going to be, we budget the, the retirement system costs across every department in the city, so once I have a final allocation of that, I'll come back with a transfer.
Other questions?
So, this is going to add a fair amount of work to what y'all are doing?
Yes.
And are you doing the paving in-house or you don't have to hire somebody else to do it?
Cal and Ed will be, you know, our current paving crew will be doing the paving, we do the work, the prep work in-house, all our guys will come in and mill, we then follow through, do the prep work, change manholes, catch basins, whatever needs to be done, clean up, and then our trucks haul it, take away the mills, then supply the blacktop to the paver.
And then some of this will be done in conjunction with the, the central, the Central Hudson paving?
Uh, yes, some of it, I, we are in communication with Central Hudson, I'm still waiting a final number from them, what they are going to contribute for the Washington Avenue project. Can't disclose those numbers at this time, but it's fairly substantial.
Okay.
The other will be out of that three hundred and fifty, you say, have a fifty thousand dollar block for overtime because our aggressive schedule is just that, it's very aggressive to fit it all in, you know, we need to have the guys working the overtime. Also, out of that, there's a couple of overages on some paving that I cannot use the CHIPS funding for, so we're going to clean up a couple of projects, some of the repairs to Wilbur Avenue, I think we have a fifteen thousand dollar tab left for that project, so we're cleaning up a couple of them things and adding about eight streets worth of paving out of that money as well. Also, the Broadway underpass, we're going to be hitting that this Monday, weather, you know, if the weather works with us, four AM, we're going to be out there paving to get that cleaned up a bit and, you know, to kind of patch that until the Broadway street escapes, takes control, gets going.
Okay. We'll be with, with you at four AM for the ribbon cutting.
Okay.
These might designate me.
I think that's Bill Kerry's word, isn't it?
Okay. Other questions? Your motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thanks for paving the streets, Ed.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, moving on now to Christian.
Do you have a chance to like paint this through that panel cover that's made in Washington? See if you put some shims under there or something?
Shimmed it, put some silicone on it, try to quiet it down, but that's, again, a very replaced item.
It seemed like it was quieted.
Yeah.
Okay, we will skip the sixth item, which is the Henry Street Safeties, the school project, state environmental quality review, which belongs with laws and rules, and move on, sweetie.
Oh, good.
Seventh one, which is mobile stage expended funds.
Yes, we're requesting a resolution to move forward with purchasing our mobile stage, which is a grant-funded purchase of a mobile community stage that can be used by the city and also available for rental to different community groups. We received a grant through Kevin Cahill for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and then an additional sponsorship donation from Radio Kingston to cover the full cost of the stage.
Radio Kingston is kicking in twenty-five thousand?
Yes, they will have some priority use of the stage for different community events, but they work with a lot of different groups throughout the city, so their constituents really are similar to, to everyone who would be using it.
Generous contribution.
What kind of priority would they get? Twenty-five thousand?
They will not necessarily have to pay for the fee and it's a limited contract that's renewable, so it covers the use of the stage, although we haven't determined what the actual fees for renting the stage are yet, we have to work with DPW, once the stage arrives and we determine how long it takes to set up and then break down and pick up and deliver and pick up the stage, so by fall, we expect delivery and we'll have the stage company come in to do training, so for Radio Kingston, they wouldn't need to pay that fee for the use and they expect to need it once or twice a month during the warm weather, so it, it's not an abundance of use, but they do, they will receive some priority for scheduling.
So, they're going to receive a scheduling priority and no payment for twenty-five thousand?
Right.
For the life, for the life of the?
Of the stage itself.
Of the stage.
It's renewable after five years, we'll sit down and talk about whether it's, the, the system has worked properly or if there's any issues that have come up over time, but it, it's a pretty generous offer on both sides, so we're not anticipating any difficulty with it, but after the first round expires, we'll sit down and talk about it again, we negotiate and we'll take it from there.
Has just been put out to be, is this a firm advice?
Yes, we put an RFP out and we got the votes back.
Can you just briefly describe it to me?
The stage itself, it's a mobile stage that comes in its own trailer, so it, it's stored in the trailer, it will be stored at the Conti Street address, the DPW Conti Street address, it has a hitch that most trucks can connect it to and pull it for delivery to whatever location it's going to. Once it arrives, there's some minimal setup that's manual with the people who are doing the setup, and then there's a hydraulic system which requires just the push of a button and then the sides and the roof come out automatically and then to, to put it away. Um, and then to, to put it away, you push the button again and it starts to go back up. And then the, um, technicians come and assemble it back into its trailer, and then it is picked up and delivered back.
How big a vehicle does it take to, to move this?
Um, I don't know the size.
Standard, uh, heavy pickup or one ton?
Oh, really?
Yeah, maybe a five fifty or something. Something somebody could drive without having a class A license, basically.
And we're sure that the, uh, when it's folded up in the trailer, that it's narrower than the width of a street?
Oh, it, yeah, it's, it's for travel. It won't be over width.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, made to meet regulations for travel on roads.
I think it might be eight foot six, which is, you know, under the maximum.
Well, yeah, this, I mean, this is a really, really cool thing. We've had, we've had that parked down there for a long time without... I'm gonna say without a stage, because the stages that have been down there are dreadful. I played on them sometime, but my foot went through the bottom of it one time. I mean, they were, they were awful. Then I think we were renting some, so this, this is nice. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to see it, you know, a quality stage down there. I mean, there's a lot of activity and it really deserves having a stage down there, so.
This can be moved around to whatever, we have to still determine which parts have the, the right setup, the, you know, that can handle the weight of it or, you know, the terrain needs to, electrical needs, the terrain needs to be even. So, we, we'll have to work that out when we get a little closer to the delivery. But, um, it's for use, you know, in a lot of different types of locations.
Oh, very nice.
Do you have a committee report?
I don't.
Do you have a committee report?
I don't.
I believe there are one, there's, there's two.
Oh, wait, it's just, yeah, I beg your pardon, right here. Okay, Department Office of Grants Management, a resolution authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance, one hundred percent of the cost of the mobile community stage, estimate financial impact.
That's what we like.
And then to follow that up, I have budgetary transfer, and it's just a, it's a wash.
Okay, let's deal with this resolution first. Is there a...
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now, control on the behalf of DPW, request 2019 budgetary transfer for the mobile community setup. Request of grants management as follows. Increase on the revenue side, uh, private agency grant, twenty-five thousand dollars. And increase New York State grant, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, totaling one hundred and fifty. Then increase the expense line, other equipment, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on to Deed Stadium and Transportation Projects and Grede Pool. So... Two committee reports here. One is the resolution of the common council, authorizing the mayor to spend funds in the first instance for the DRI initiative grant for upgrades to Deed Stadium and Grede Pool. And let's see, we're looking at... We've been awarded funding of two and a half million dollars for these projects.
Um, I think, uh, Deed's is two point five million and, uh, the transportation project is two point three.
Two point three two seven five.
Yeah.
Well, that's a, that's a different resolution. So, we have funding of two point five million dollars to upgrade Deed Stadium and Grede Pool, and you've, uh, highlighted the improvements that will be made in the communication.
Just to give a little background, so this is part of our downtown revitalization initiative, award the ten million dollar award for Uptown, I would say. And, uh, so this is, the, the projects went through, uh, planning process, so the strategic investment plan that was created by the, the city, uh, submitted to the governor's office. The, the governor's office then selected the projects from that strategic investment plan to be funded by the, through the ten million dollars, and one of them was the Deed Stadium project. So, the, the funds are now being run through the Department of State, uh, and there's no match required. But, um, we do need a resolution to start spending funds. Um, we've recently put out an RFP for, uh, design consultants, and, uh, we're down to the three we're interviewing next week. So, um, you know, soon we'll have design consultants on board and need to spend, spend money.
So, this is a resolution to spend the entire two point five million dollars?
Yes, I mean, it's to be able to...
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, the first part we'll spend on consultants, which, uh, I'm not sure what the, the fee will be yet. That's part of the interviews and negotiations. It'll be a portion of that, two point five million, probably under five hundred thousand. And, uh, and then the, the rest would be used for construction.
How long will these projects go on?
Well, um, you know, we started downtown revitalization initiative projects. It's a, you know, priority for the governor. So, they, they want us to, you know, make them happen fast. So, I think, what, we had like a, a year for design? Uh, yeah, we were less thinking of construction next, maybe in 2020, so.
Okay, resolution on from the Office of Grants Management. Are there any other questions?
Yes.
So, there's still, it looks like a fair amount of decision-making to be made here about what, what amenities are gonna be added to and fixed with Deed Stadium?
Yeah.
And that's, what's, what's the process for deciding that?
Um, well, in the, uh, we'll have a project advisory committee that, uh, will guide the, the consultants, and they will start meeting probably after the consultants do the initial, um, uh, analysis and survey and that sort of thing. And then, um, I think we scheduled, what, two, two public meetings? Two public meetings. Two public meetings in the, in the design process. Uh, and, you know, that would be the opportunity for the, for the public to, to give input.
Okay. And who's on the advisory committee? Who gets on that?
Uh, we haven't established it yet. Not yet. We're starting to formulate some recommendations for the committee. Slightly Rich Silverstein, who's the athletic director at the high school, will be involved. He's, was, has been involved in the procurement process of selecting a consultant. And then other community members, um, and representatives from the city.
And I'm, I should add that, um, I'm the liaison to the Deed Stadium Commission. So, we discussed, I mean, we've been discussing these improvements, and I think, in general, all these improvements are to get us additional revenue in terms of, um, state events coming, coming to the, uh, to the stadium, which, you know, they all seem to be bypassing us now in favor of, uh, new, new stadiums that are around, particularly Middletown. Um, I mean, I remember when this, when the turf went in the first time, people couldn't wait to get here. And now, you know, now it's old and it's, you know, it's not new anymore. So, you know, hopefully, these, these improvements are really gonna renew interest in coming here. I mean, it's, it's a good location. We're centrally located in a state. Um, I think this is really gonna pay off for the city, for, uh, for businesses around here, people coming here, staying, eating, getting gas, whatever. I, I think we're gonna see a big influx of people coming and using this. Rate, I'm all for it.
Resolution of the common council, City of Kingston, authorizing the mayor to spend funds in the first instance for the DRI initiative grant number from the New York State Department of State for upgrades to Deed Stadium and Grede Pool. Your motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Secondly, is for the authorizing the mayor to spend first instance for the Uptown transportation improvements. Can you just brief us on that?
Yeah, so similar, you know, similar initial process. Um, this was, uh, one of the projects that was selected by the governor in the strategic investment plan. Um, well, essentially, they, they allocated two, they, that was two point three, whatever.
Two point three two seven five.
Yeah, uh, they allocated that to transportation improvements, and we had a lot of options in the strategic investment plan and including, um, Shrank Drive, the reversal of Wall and Fair, um, some intersection improvements. And so what we, we figured out that we can afford is, well, Shrink, Shrank Drive was specifically chosen by the governor, so, uh, or the Department of State. And, uh, so Shrink Drive, um, improvements and, um, improvements to the Clinton Ave and Albany Ave intersection, which, um, really tie into the I-587, uh, circle that will be there in the future. So, we really wanna improve that intersection so we don't have, um, backups, you know, in between the I-587 circle and the Clinton Ave and Albany Ave light, and then also, um, Clinton Ave and Westbrook Lane. So, um, that's that three-way stop, and, um, you know, the way it's currently configured is really slows traffic down getting into the, the, um, Hanford Plaza. So, those are the three focus areas of the, the transportation.
And then with Shrink Drive, uh, are the improvements along there, is that being thought of in conjunction with the Kingstonian project? In spite of, parallel to?
No, it'll be, um, in conjunction with the Kingstonian and any, and any other project that's actually in the vicinity. So, we'll really have, um, and, uh, well, we have a wayfinding, uh, plan that's underway. I'm trying to remember what else we named in there. Well, nearby, the Joyce Lane intersection for Deeds will be happening at the same, oh, right.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, we have a pedestrian safety action plan and project. It's a, a different federal aid project, but it's for that intersection at Joyce Lane and, and Deeds, so. Um, and we would expect the consultants to be working with the Deed Stadium consultants. Because Deed Stadium, um, will also be looking at traffic flow and how, not, not just the actual architecture of the buildings in Deeds, but, you know, what's happening, what's, what's happening with the site plan around the whole area. So, um, in the RFP, we specifically named that those, all those projects that the consultants need to, you know, work concurrently with them.
So, to some degree, they need to wait and make sure that the Kingstonian project is actually gonna go through?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
And then, will there be a community involvement in that too, or is it more technical and so?
Um, no, it'll be the, it'll be very similar. Um, we'll have a project advisory committee.
Okay.
And we'll also have a, um, I think we had two public meetings in that one as well. Which, you know, we normally have one public meeting for design projects. You know, maybe we'll have two, or we might have some additional outreach, but, I mean, we recognize that we need, you know, a lot of public engagement on these projects.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the resolution is to expand funds in the first instance for the DRI grant from the New York State, Department of State for Uptown transportation improvements. These are welcome improvements.
Uh, and this is also, there's no match funding, so.
Yeah.
Add no match funds, right? Right, no matching funds.
Required.
So, the financial impact to the city is zero. Okay, your motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Moving on to local match for Empire State Trail, Route 32 sidewalks, pages fifty-four and fifty-five in your packet. You're looking for a local, I understand, you're looking for a local match of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars to go with the grant of five hundred and twenty?
There, there should be an updated letter that I put in today. Do you all have that?
She sent it to Lisa, she's not here.
Oh, okay.
I heard that letter.
I'm gonna have to go print out. Yeah, that, that would be good. Um, it's under communications, okay, for this month. Yes, it's updated letter, and there's two resolutions and two committee reports.
Okay.
All right, then we can, while we're waiting for that, we could discuss, uh, and you had written me on this, an, an additional special finance committee for CFAs, so you can pass them in the July meeting.
Yeah, um, so, uh, though you've been around in the past, usually we have big, like, nine resolutions. We have in the past for CFA. CFAs, it's for consolidated money application. Um, it's, uh, all of the, not all, but most of the state, uh, grants for capital projects are due at the end of July. And for many of them, we have to have a municipal resolution that passed, um, you know, at the, at the July meeting. So, this year, I requested a special finance meeting, uh, just to cover only CFAs. I thought that, it, well, we, um, need a little more time this year to, we're, I mean, we've always been very intentional, but we're looking to be very intentional about what we apply for this year, given our current project workload and staff capacities. So, we wanted to, we wanna get ready for you at the, at the meeting.
So, could we, uh, I would suggest we're trying to do this, the, the, we want the week of June twenty-four. We have public safety and the general government meets on the twenty-sixth. Could we have that meeting before then? You'd be there, I'll be there.
I'll be there.
You'll be there. There's three of us.
You mean, before in a week or preceding the meeting?
Uh, preceding the meeting.
Or following? I agree with your sense of following. Might make more sense to be following the public safety meeting, because usually there's not much.
Well, no, because we're gonna have to have another person from this committee, we all need to sit through the whole public safety meeting.
Well, is, do you know if there's gonna be much on that? I haven't seen agenda.
Huh? There's only three items on the public safety. Hand, a couple of handicaps and something else. You don't have much time.
I haven't seen it, so I don't know.
No, it's, it's on, on.
We're not gonna, we'll fix an hour.
You never know.
Yeah.
You never know.
Well, I don't care whether we have it before or after.
Um, it doesn't, it really doesn't matter to me. I don't know. Pre, prior to it, I guess.
Okay.
That seems to be what we normally do.
We normally have it prior to.
Prior to.
Yeah, let's have it prior to the ju, public thing. Patrick, can you attend that night?
I'll try to be there, yes, that's my ability.
Okay, and we'll let Tony know. Okay, all right, but we need, us three will be here. We need...
I understand.
Another person, all right, so let's make it.
We have to check, we have to check Granicus, because we don't have Granicus availability up here to make sure there's nothing prior to six-thirty in this room. I don't have privilege, I don't have access to that here. I have to check my computer or Elise's computer tomorrow. We just wanna make sure that there's not a meeting abutting public safety, because this room is very busy. Sometimes there's meetings up until the next meeting. So, let me just check that tomorrow to make sure this room is free.
Okay.
That no one else has scheduled, because they go on Granicus and schedule a lot of stuff, but I don't know it off the top of my head.
The intent would be to, perhaps...
Like, six o'clock, you wanna?
Yeah, why don't we say six?
If there's rooms available?
Is six o'clock okay?
What time is the public safety meeting?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty. Is that enough time?
If I wanna go with five-thirty, I mean, you... Yeah, I mean, we might have, um, like, five resolutions, and, and then sometimes, um, a community member, I was, uh, sometimes organizations need a resolution too, so I was gonna have them bring their resolutions.
So, you think six, six o'clock is, is compressing?
I mean, if you guys don't have a lot of questions, we can speed right through it, but I would suggest probably five-thirty.
I'm fine with that, that's.
Yeah, I'll go with your suggestion.
I'm seeing here there's Climate Smart at five, is that in this room?
On the smart.
No, that's next door.
That's next door.
Okay.
Okay, let's, let's go with five-thirty on.
Is Kevin available at five-thirty?
June twenty-six, assuming the meeting room is available. If it's not, then we'll have to maybe put it at the end.
Right, I know. Like, because Kevin's, you need to be at these meetings.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what you're talking about.
You're planning on having a meeting like five-thirty on the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
Or twenty-fourth?
A meeting for?
For the consolidated funding application resolutions.
Never been a part of that before, so no, make this, make.
No, it was for the finance committee.
Schedule this according to your needs, don't think about, I'm not normally associated or involved in that anyway.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, so we're waiting for.
So I can explain the project while we're waiting for Ruthann to return with the letter. Essentially, it's a letter requesting authorization in the first instance of match funding for a project on Route thirty-two. They, New York State DOT has been working on design of a project for the Empire State Trail on Route thirty-two, starting at Rockwell Lane, and coming all the way into Kingston, through Green Hill Avenue, and around on the Fashion Lane, and then down to Broadway, connecting in with the Broadway Streetscape project. And originally, their design had planned for simply five-foot shoulders on both sides of Route thirty-two, between Rockwell Lane and that crazy intersection, Green Hill Wall and South, South Wall. And the city, you know, gave the DOT feedback that, and advocated for sidewalks, because it, and that's, that's really been a priority. It's been a project that has been talked about for a very long time. Having sidewalks on Route thirty-two, at least up to Golden Hill, and also up to the Institute for Family Health. And so, you know, initially, they weren't going to be able to do it, but then they found more federal funding, New York State DOT found more federal funding for sidewalks, so now they're able to include that in the project. And I think they, the numbers will be in the letter that Ruthann brings up, but the sidewalks are, I want to say it was five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, and there's a twenty percent local match required, which is a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And so the resolutions are for the, the match funding only. So it's for the hundred and seven, seven thousand bond and authorization of, it's a New York State DOT resolution that.
So the sidewalks on one side only?
Yeah.
And coming into the city from the jail, is it on the right or left? Because east-west means.
Yeah, so if you're, if you're standing at Stewart's, facing out towards thirty-two, like, you're gonna drive away towards Rosendale, it'll be on the, I believe it's on the right side.
Right side, okay.
So it's on the right side where Golden, Golden Hill and the Institute for Family Health, it's Amy, Amy Kate Parkway.
And what about the bikes?
So the bicycles, it'll still be on the other side of the road, there will still be a five-foot wide shoulder.
Shoulder.
And I think it will be two-foot, I mean, for bicycles on, going out of the city, I think they will be expected to go in the traffic. But from my point of view, if it's on the Empire State Trail, if you got kids on a, on a road, I'd rather have them on the sidewalk. And, and kids are allowed to be on sidewalks. If you're thinking about, you know, kids traveling on this Empire State Trail, I would prefer to have them on sidewalks than on five-foot wide shoulders. That's what we all know about bicycle accidents, that happened recently in Ulster County, where people are on big wide shoulders and still get hit. But a curb is a nice deterrent. So there'll also be rumble strips, the other thing that the city requested were rumble strips in the white line area. So, but there will be a meeting, it's in the letter that you should, and, I think it's June, June nineteenth. There will be an open house that New York State DOT will hold on June nineteenth from six p.m. to seven-thirty p.m. And then you'll be able to see the design for the entire project.
So the total cost of the project at this sidewalk is five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, of which four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, is that eighty percent?
Should be eighty percent.
Yeah, okay. It will be federally funded and a local match of a hundred and seven, if that's what is required. So the city must pass a resolution drafted by DOT, appropriate match funding for the project, and pass a resolution authorizing a bond to that amount, which is a hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Well, after that, you mean going on Green Hill Avenue?
Goes down Green Hill Avenue.
Yeah, goes down Green Hill Avenue.
Can I just be painted lines?
Um, no. I, I think that there, it will be a protected bike lane, a two-way bypass, like what we're doing on Broadway, on one side of the road. I can't recall exactly, I know that there was discussion about whether it was gonna be on one side, if there would be in there with lots of trees, you know, there was discussion about where that was going to be, and that, that will be revealed in the public meeting.
So I missed the word, Broadway, do we jump over to Seaver Street?
Um, it goes over the Green Hill Bridge, and then it goes around on Fashion Lane, and then it comes down, is that Railroad Ave there?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And then it connects into the protected bike lane on Broadway. So.
If we wait any longer, will the price go down further?
That's not my experience. I mean, I don't remember the total project cost, I'm sure they'll share it at the June ninth meeting, but I think the total project cost for the entire project is, you know, above two million dollars. So for the city to pay a hundred and seven thousand dollars for sidewalks, as, you know, a little teeny portion of the project, that's a pretty good deal.
Our, our out-of-pocket will be the full five-thirty-four percent?
No, our out-of-pocket will only be a hundred and seven.
We won't, we don't have to pay any of the five-thirty-four in the first instance?
No.
No?
No, because it'll be, essentially what we'll do is we'll write a check to DOT for the hundred and seven.
Okay.
And then they will, they will manage all the finances. It'll be similar to what we did with I-587. So they'll manage all the finances. And they'll manage, they're the project managers, it's their project, so they will manage the bid and the contractor and everything else.
The resolution authorizes the implication in funding of one hundred percent of the cost of an eligible transportation federal aid project and state aid project to fully fund the local share of federal and state aid, eligible and ineligible project costs for the Route thirty-two, Amy Kate Parkway to Finsburg Avenue sidewalk construction project. So the estimated financial impact is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Way aye.
Huh?
Aye.
Aye, okay, good.
I bet you this would be a popular one, but maybe not, who knew, never knew. I mean, as far as sidewalks on Route thirty-two.
Yeah.
I mean, I've heard many, many stories of people pushing kids in rollers and.
No, it's desperately needed over there.
Okay. That's it? For you guys, yeah. Okay, good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
What's that?
There was a second resolution.
Um, there's a bond ordinance, and there's a, usually a project authorization funding in the first instance.
What she just handed us.
Is that?
What she just handed us.
Well, I ignore.
Yeah. Those are two different ones, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is, this is the authorization, the first instance for that.
Yes.
One of them that's going around should be the bond.
I don't think it's going around.
Uh, did the bond go around too? There were two communications.
I don't think so.
Where?
Uh, there was two. There was a bond, and then there was also the project.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
For the sidewalks? Yes. There was a bond, and then the project.
Yes, I didn't know.
She just handed us two resolutions, or two committee reports.
A bigger part, here it is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
She has, she can't access, she can't listen, and if you're requesting something, the data for a room, she doesn't see.
We have, we have the resolution for the bond.
And then I'm gone for a few days, and yeah, nothing works.
Resolution of the common council, City of Kingston, authorizing a bond ordinance to the sum of a hundred and seven thousand dollars to fund the local share of a New York State DOT managed project to construct sidewalks on Route thirty-two, the Seaver Kingston from Amy Kate Parkway to Finsburg Avenue as part of federal aid project, P I N eight seven five nine point one three.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Hi. Okay, thank you to.
Is that the rest of them?
Yeah.
And that one?
And that one's coming around.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Controller update?
Ever.
Things looking good still.
Yeah, well, we touched base on the, the numbers for the end of two thousand and eighteen, pre-ordered numbers. We talked about the increase in fund balance year over year. A copy of our annual filing with the state controller is available on our website, it's filed under my department, the last several years of filings were there, we keep the audits there as well. We did have a pickup in fund balance from two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, with the actions that we've taken now, we're down, you know, fund balances. We've been putting distance of what the policy limit is. If you do look at the report, there's, there's been some new accounting standards that have been put forward, which.
Day and month?
Changed some of the accounting for some long-term liabilities in the sewer and water fund, so the sewer and water fund fund balance, both took a dip in two thousand and eighteen due to new accounting pronouncements, but they're basically non-cash, non-current liabilities, so. But as you look at the report, if you have any questions, you know, please give me a call. Currently, for, you have a handout for the current year through April, things are tracking rather positive so far. Sales tax at this point is, is still tracking positive. We are at three point seven seven percent over the prior year. I remember there are some limitations with what that sales tax number will be. If we are capped, there is a hard cap of thirteen million eight twenty-five, we are on target to reach that number, and that would put us a hundred and eighty thousand dollars over the two thousand and nineteen budget. Additionally, you know, the parking revenue, building code revenue is all tracking positive. Major expense categories, regular pay being the biggest one, health insurance, all tracking positive. We're a little high on overtime. Part of that has been slightly understaffed in certain departments where, you know, we have, particularly the public safety departments, when they have shortfalls in positions, there's a delay in rehiring those positions, so that tracked, they'll cause the overtime increase for a period of time, until they refill and rehire those positions. It'll probably track a little high throughout the summer, you'll see, tend to see a spike in overtime throughout the summer.
Mm-hmm.
But at this point, anyway, the positive trend in regular pay would outweigh the negative trend in overtime pay. So I'm not concerned about that, about that at this point, continue to keep you posted. Contingency balance is seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. There's no, there's nothing that was submitted this month that will draw on contingency, so that number will continue again next month. I give you an updated fund balance, the seventeen point zero three percent, and that is prior to the draws that we've made, so we're sitting at just over thirteen percent now, so. Things are, look fine at this point. I sent everyone an email, you have a copy of these reports, and you also have the, you know, the actual detailed expense revenue reports as well, you can look at all the different categories. If you have any questions, let me know. You know, I'd recommend if you haven't spent time, drill through those, you know, take a few minutes at some point and look, look through those.
And our bonding limit, are we still within a comfortable?
Uh, well, the bonding limit, we measure once a year. It was last measured with the two thousand and nineteen budget, it was. The twenty-six point one eight percent at twelve thirty-one eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, at this point, we're looking at doing a short-term note, probably in August, and I'm trying to calculate how much we're gonna borrow there, but, you know, there's gonna be, continue to be pressure on our, not necessarily on the debt limit, and we're very safe with the debt limit, but, because that's a, you know, we would have to, we'd have to increase our debt tremendously to get anywhere near the debt limit. It's more of a budgetary concern that we should be thinking about when we are authorizing projects and evaluating bond ordinances, is what is the impact, not necessarily on the debt limit, I mean, that is a factor, but we're, we would experience significant budgetary stress long before we'd ever hit a debt limit, okay? So just, just keep that in mind.
Okay.
That's why at this point, you know, the budgetary stress is primary, I would consider it that limit secondary.
Mm-hmm.
We have, we have net indebtedness of, at twelve thirty-one eighteen, of twenty-six million. You know, we were only twenty-six percent of our debt limit, we had a ninety-nine million dollar debt limit, so we're nowhere near that. If we wanted to file, we could file exemptions on a lot of the sewer debt, so it's, it's really a budgetary consideration that you have to think about.
Mm-hmm.
You know, in the general fund, every, every hundred and seventy thousand dollars of a annual debt service payment is a one percent tax increase. And, you know, the number's much smaller for the sewer fund, so.
What was that number?
Roughly, well, if you take the tax levy, you know, and do, you know, one percent of the tax levy, so that, you know, the two thousand and nineteen tax levy was seventeen million six fifty, so if you take a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, that's a one percent. Now, keep in mind, a lot of projects that we're looking at are twenty-year projects, so, you know, it's a two million dollar project, over twenty years is only, when I say only, it's a hundred thousand dollars a year, plus interest. I mean, that's just straight-line principle.
Mm-hmm.
But that's, you know, should be clicking on your heads as you're evaluating everything.
Okay.
You know, don't be afraid to ask questions about those types of things. A lot of, a lot of the major projects have been in the sewer fund. Some of the storm sewer projects, including Jacobs Valley, are from the general fund, so that's part of our general fund tax. Let me see.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?